Hi, good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. This weekend, Environmental Resources is hosting their final remote collection event, and so I've asked Susan Erlenwine to talk about that.
Good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Commissioners. You know, it's finally fall, and this is a time of year where some households decide to do some fall cleaning in preparation for the holidays coming up. County can help them get rid of some of that material, especially stuff from the garage that they know is going to freeze and not be good in the spring, whether it's pesticides, herbicides, oils, gasoline. They can bring it down to our facility at 801 Stillwell. We're open Tuesday through Friday from 9:00 to 5:00, and on Saturdays from 9:00 to 3:00. But in order to better serve our community, we also have these remote events. The final one for the year, as Kate mentioned, is this Saturday in Park City. It's going to be located at the Park City Administration Building, which is 1941 East 61st Street North. That's about two blocks east of Hydralic on the south side of the road. We'll be there from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. this Saturday, collecting from anyone in Park City, surrounding cities, or out in the unincorporated area. We encourage them to bring their unwanted household hazardous waste to our collection event. If you want more information about what we will take or won't take, you can always go to our website at sedgwickcounty.org, or call 660-7464 for more information. Really encourage people to do this. The next time we have a remote event will be next spring for the spring cleanups. So, thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We appreciate what you do for our community and keeping our environment clean. Thanks for being here this morning.
All right. This week and next week, Sedgwick County Commissioners are seeking feedback on the Riverfront Legacy Master Plan process, and also Sedgwick County Strategic Plan. We have a schedule of events on our website, as Susan mentioned, sedgwickcounty.org, or you can also find those events on our Facebook page. This month, our Extension Office is holding elections, and so Dr. Jennifer Brantley is here this morning to talk some more about that.
Jane, Jane. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, and county professionals, and citizens of Sedgwick County. My name is Jennifer Brantley. I'm the Director of the Sedgwick County Extension Center, and I wanted to take a moment to announce the Extension election season. Each year, Extension hosts elections to fill 12 positions of our 24-member Program Development Committee. We also call it PDC for short. The PDC is important because it assists agents in programming and helps them to kind of steer towards what's relevant in Sedgwick County. It's also important because from this 24 PDC group, our nine Extension Council Board members are selected, and our board members are the governing body for the Extension Council throughout the year. So, it's a very important group. Oftentimes, people say, "Well, we don't know anything about the candidates. We haven't seen any commercials or signs." We have information. We will have it on our website by the end of the week, and there will be biographies about the people who are running for our positions. And we're also working with Sedgwick County Communications to get that advertised through the county channels as well. So, early voting for this election is October 15th and 16th at the Sedgwick County Extension Center. It's from 8:00 to 5:00, and then October 17th, from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening, is the official voting day. So, again, this is at the Extension Center at 21st and Ridge. So, please consider voting. We would love to have everyone from the county providing input for our next Program Development Committee group. On a quick other note and a plug, we are hosting a grant-writing workshop, so please visit our website, and we can provide information about grant-writing, so this might be relevant to anyone within the community. And then just finally, we'd like to just express our continued thanks and appreciation for our partnership with the county. Any questions?
Very good. Well, Dr. Brantley, thank you. Commissioner Cruz has a question.
Yes, thanks for being here today. When is that grant-writing workshop? So, if someone's interested, they can know when to plan for it.
Yeah, thank you for asking us. October 15th. And actually, it will be held, we're working in partnership with the nonprofit Chamber of Service, and their offices are held over here across the street at the Envision Center, and that's where it will be held.
Great.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brantley.
All right. We'll be sure to promote both of those events, the Extension elections and the nonprofit grant-writing workshops. On the agenda this morning, we have meeting minutes. There are four proclamations, an appointment to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. We have a public hearing for the Sedgwick County Fire Code. You'll consider an amendment to the contract between COMCARE and USD 259. And then there's a review of the Board of Bids and Contracts. So, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. First of all, I want to welcome Becky Tuttel from the City of Wichita, Councilwoman. Welcome. Also, I want to welcome all the other folks that are in our audience today, and those that are joining us on KPDS and online. I'd like to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, October 2nd, 2019. Madam Clerk, next item.
An invocation to be led by Pastor Joseph Wiseman, Covenant Presbyterian Church. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Loving gracious God, thank you for opening our eyes this morning and for gifting us with the strength to rise to meet the day. Thank you for the privilege of self-governance. Help us to remember that you, God, and you alone, are Lord of the conscience. Help us to resist the temptation, to succumb to the pride of thinking that only our own point of view is the correct one, that it is somehow okay to impose our own understanding of you upon those who you have chosen to bless with a different understanding of you. Remind us, constantly loving shepherd, that when religion and government is mixed, that neither you nor the sacred trust bestowed upon our human civic leaders is honored, but is rather adulterated. God of profound loving kindness, like a loving authoritative parent, you do not angrily impose your will upon us, but rather you invite us into your loving and reciprocal relationship. Let us follow your divine example in our every thought, our every action, our every deed. And may the discussion, may the debate, and may the decisions of this body, this body of leaders that you have allowed to be placed in authority, emulate this aspect of your personality, and be pleasing in your sight. And God, may the interests of the influential few not overshadow the necessities of the marginalized many, and may the will of the many not silence the rights of the ignored few. Remind us that loving you with our whole heart, our whole soul, all of our strength and our entire mind can only occur when we love our neighbor as we love ourselves. And loving God, remind us that every human being you created is nothing less than our neighbor. Let our actions and decisions honor this. I speak knowing that you hear. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Wiseman, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Thank you. I do not have anyone signed up to speak on public agenda today, but if anyone would like to speak, I'll give an opportunity at this time. Seeing no one, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2019.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from September 4th, move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamation.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I would like to read this morning. Whereas every year, hundreds of Sedgwick County residents face the reality of living with mental illness, every year during the first full week of October, participating organizations bring awareness of mental illness to our community. And whereas, mental illnesses are more common than cancer, diabetes, or heart disease, and affect one out of every five people, touching every age, race, gender, religion, and income. More than two-thirds of Sedgwick County residents who have mental illness live in the community and lead productive lives. And whereas, mental illnesses are not the result of personal weakness or lack of character and are treatable, many people diagnosed with mental illnesses can experience relief by seeking treatment. And whereas, NAMI, Ascension Via Christi Behavioral Health, COMCARE, Mental Health Association of South Central Kansas, the Robert J. Dole Veterans Administration Medical Center, Breakthrough Club, Project Independence, Prairie View, and many other Sedgwick County community organizations continue to provide treatment, support, education, and advocacy to help improve the lives of individuals affected by mental illness. Therefore, now be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of October 6th to the 12th, 2019, as Mental Health Awareness Week. Sedgwick County is dedicated to increasing public awareness of mental illness in our community, and ask that you reach out to someone who needs help. No one should have to confront mental illness alone. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye. This will be accepted this morning by Lynn Corr from NAMI. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. This Sunday, the Wichita affiliate of NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness, will kick off National Mental Illness Awareness Week with a candlelight ceremony. It will be held at Newman University, and will be sponsored by NAMI Wichita, COMCARE, the Department of Psychiatry and Behavioral Sciences at KU School of Medicine, St. Anthony's Senior Care Hospital, KVC Hospitals, Episcopal Social Services, and Breakthrough Club. We are anticipating the attendance of approximately 200 people. This year, the Office of District Attorney of Sedgwick County presents Kevin Briggs with the power of listening. Kevin, a retired California Highway Patrol Sergeant, will talk about encouraging individuals in despair and clinging to life by a thread back from the edge of the Golden Gate Bridge to start a new chapter in their lives. In his presentation, he will touch on the difficult topics of mental illness and suicide. These are not just topics, but are part of life for millions of Americans and hundreds in Sedgwick County. One in five adults in America experiences a mental health disorder in a given year. This is likely true for Sedgwick County as well. These disorders do not differentiate between race, religion, age, or income, and are biological in nature. They are no one's fault. Fewer than one-third of adults and one-half of children with a diagnosable mental illness receive mental health services in a given year. However, the agencies I listed as sponsors of our candlelight ceremony, and many other Sedgwick County community organizations strive to increase those numbers and reach as many people living with mental illness in our communities as they can. They provide valuable and effective services and treatment for mental illnesses and prove that treatment works. I am proof. Twenty-eight years ago, I was told I would never be able to live outside of the nursing home I was in because of my mental illness. However, like many others, I am now living independently and productively in the community, largely due to the services I receive from some of those organizations I mentioned. Treatment works. And I am happy. There was a time I thought that would be impossible. With the treatment, support, education, and advocacy provided by these organizations, the lives of more individuals living with mental illness in our communities and our families can also be improved, and possibly they too can be happy. That can be a wonderful and possible outcome. Thank you.
Ms. Corr, thank you very much for being here today and your testimony. We sincerely appreciate it, and this is absolutely one of our top priorities in Sedgwick County. Each of the Commissioners work on behavioral health, constantly trying to see what we can do to help our community. But thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
And bringing this proclamation to us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item C, proclamation declaring pregnancy and infant loss awareness month.
Thank you. I have asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation for us.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas infant mortality refers to the death of a baby less than one year of age and is a basic indicator of population's health. And whereas, the Sedgwick County infant mortality rate is 6.9 per 1,000 live births compared to the national average of 5.8 per 1,000 live births, with the three leading causes being congenital defects, prematurity, and sudden unexpected infant death. And whereas, research has shown that healthy birth outcomes can be increased with early and adequate prenatal care, home visitation programs, and education for caregivers and providers. And whereas, sleep-related death can be reduced by following the ABCs of safe sleep, alone, on the back, and in a clutter-free crib, to ensure the safety and survival of infants. And whereas, Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month will raise awareness, promote maternal and infant health, and save infant sleep to spare families and our community the tragedy of prenatal and infant death. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month in Sedgwick County, and urge all citizens to become more aware of infant mortality, promote safe infant sleep, and lend their courage, caring and support, to all the families who have experienced the tragedy of infant death. Here to accept, I move that we accept this proclamation, adopt the proclamation, excuse me.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And here to accept is Kristy Shunn, the Executive Director of the Kansas Infant Death and SIDS Network, Inc., Kids Network.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Dennis, Commissioner Cruz, others, some of my fellow colleagues, and also the citizens. My name is Kristy Shunn, and I'm the Director of the Kansas Infant Death and SIDS Network. Very briefly, our mission is to provide bereavement services when a family does have a baby die, and also to provide community education to reduce infant mortality as a whole. While the three leading causes, as Commissioner Cruz stated, is congenital anomalies, prematurity, and sleep-related death, sleep-related death is the leading cause of death for an infant one month to one year, and there's some very strategic things that we can do to reduce these deaths and really get our infant mortality rate down. We've seen our infant mortality rate fall little by little, and that's a hard number to move very quickly, but we need to keep that downward trend going. So, there's some things that we've been doing in the state, and specifically in Sedgwick County. Last month, we did a safe sleep instructor training, where we have about 150 professionals from across the state come in for a two-day training and train them on how to educate healthcare providers, law enforcement, EMS, firefighters, parents, caregivers, grandparents, on how to sleep a baby safely. The network is also collaborating with a number of people across the community, the Wichita Black Nurse Association, Sedgwick County Health Department, Healthy Babies has many safe sleep instructors, as well as area churches, DCF. Everyone's coming together to work on this together to get these infant deaths reduced. We have two events coming up in October. One is a community baby shower that's partnered specifically with the Wichita Black Nurse Association. It's held over at the Boys and Girls Club. And we bring expecting and new parents in to teach them about safe sleep, how to prevent premature birth, and how to have a healthy baby, reduce tobacco use, and increase breastfeeding, which we know are cross-cutting factors that reduce infant mortality as a whole. So, we welcome them in, educate them, and send them on their way. We're trying to change their knowledge and their intention. If I had my way, I'd go home with them all and make sure they're sleeping those babies safely, but I rely on home visitors to help do that piece. There's also another baby shower the following Saturday, the October 19th, and that's with Cafe Conleche, specifically for the Spanish-speaking population. We have a number of board members and concerned citizens that help put that together, and go to them rather than asking for them to come to us. So, I thank you immensely for the support, the awareness, and it is something that we can actually move that needle downward. It's going to take all of us, so anyone that knows somebody who's having a baby or is ever holding a baby, we know they need to be placed alone, on their back, in a clutter-free crib, in the same room, but the separate bed than the parents'. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and bringing that message. Next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring National Arts and Humanities Month.
Thank you. I've asked Commissioner Cruz to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas, the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country by embodying much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind, and enhancing and enriching the lives of every American. And whereas, cities and states, through their local and state agencies and representing thousands of cultural organizations, have celebrated the value and importance of culture in the lives of Americans and the health of thriving communities during National Arts and Humanities Month for several years. And whereas, the humanities help diverse communities across the United States explore their history and culture with the support and partnership of the National Endowment for the Humanities, the 55 state and territorial Humanities Councils, and local educational and cultural institutions. And whereas, the arts and culture industry also strengthens our economy by generating 166.3 billion in total economic activity annually, 26 billion in government revenue, and by supporting the full-time equivalent of 5 million jobs. And whereas, the creative economy drives tourism and commerce, supports American workers, and makes up 4.3% of the annual GDP, and proposed federal legislation titled the Create Act would support economic development of the creative economy. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Lacy Cruz, on behalf of Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as National Arts and Humanities Month. Call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and culture in our nation, and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in their towns and cities. I would make a motion that we adopt the proclamation.
Thank you. Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
And I will say, thank you, Chairman, for, I think we kind of fought over who was going to actually read this, because we're both big fans of Mr. Sean Chastain. When I was put on the Arts Council, I was so excited to join his Education Committee because I just wanted to work with him. So, he is here to accept. Sean Chastain is the Arts Council Education Committee Chair and Wichita Public Schools' Fine Arts Department Executive Coordinator. Is that your title?
Yes.
Seems very long.
Yeah, it is.
Wow. Stately.
Right. Well, thank you, Commissioner Cruz, and Chairman Dennis. Please know the feeling is mutual, and good morning to everyone. As Commissioner Cruz noted, the Arts Council joins thousands of arts organizations and communities across the nation in celebrating National Arts and Humanities Month throughout October. We are pleased to help carry this message through to the people of Sedgwick County that honor the efforts of artists, historians, cultural groups, arts educators, and their students who work to make the arts and humanities a part of everyone's life. Robert Lynch, President and CEO of Americans for the Arts and National Coordinator of Arts and Humanities Month, says, "Everyone recognizes the creative and cultural value of the arts and humanities. National Arts and Humanities Month offers us a chance to celebrate the often overlooked economic, educational, and civic engagement values that the arts impact in our daily lives. Everyone in the community is encouraged to participate in what has become the country's largest annual collective celebration of the arts and humanities. And as Arts Education Committee Chair, I also want to commend the longtime support of our county's school boards of education and school district, local college, and university leadership for laying the groundwork for students to experience arts throughout their entire lives. Students in Wichita and surrounding schools have the opportunity to participate in visual arts, media arts, theater, vocal, and instrumental music. Proclamations such as today give schools and communities the opportunity to focus on the value of arts for everyone. Arts and humanities help foster cross-cultural understanding, provide local and career opportunities, patron participation, and simply enhance the public support of our local communities." Finally, I would invite you to consider Educational Institutions as one of many places to celebrate the arts in our county, this and every month, whether it be the Visual Arts Connected Empty Bowls Project at WSU this weekend, perhaps the Friends University Performing Arts Ballet, or the Wichita Public Schools' Marching Bandirama at the end of the month, October 28th, and you have material on those and others. Thank you, Commission, for your support. Thank you.
Well, Sean, thank you very much for being here. I've known Sean for some time, and as Commissioner Cruz said, we debated on who was going to read that this morning, so.
Thank you.
Arts is quality of life for all of our citizens, and anything we can do to promote that, we're very proud to do it, because I've seen, as on my travels around the world, what an impact that just seeing the visual and the auditory arts and what that can do to enhance our community is fantastic. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Next item, please.
Item E, proclamation declaring October.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation that I'd like to read. Whereas, experts agree that physical activity is one of the most important things Americans can do to improve their health, and the Surgeon General recommends we get 10,000 steps or the equivalent of physical activity each day. And whereas, the Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita has deemed the month of October as Walktober, and is designed for everyone, from inactive individuals to those already making great strides towards better health. Anyone can step it up and be successful with this cool weather, hopefully cool weather, walking program. And whereas, walking is a great way to get the physical activity needed to obtain health benefits, walking does not require any special skills, it does not require a gym membership or expensive equipment. And whereas, walking is the simplest positive change you can make to effectively improve your heart health and can help maintain a healthy body weight, reduce the risks of chronic diseases and stress-related illnesses. And whereas, the Sedgwick County Health Department, in collaboration with Health and Wellness Coalition of Wichita, Active ICT, and WAMPO, are challenging residents to walk to wellness. During Walktober, residents can record their physical activity in miles, minutes, or steps, and report using the Active ICT app, online or by mail. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, David T. Dennis, Chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 2019 as Walktober in Sedgwick County, and encourage citizens to add walking as a part of their daily routine. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation. Move to approve. Commissioner Meitzner?
I'll second that. Kate and Emily wanted to know if riding the Surrey Council's walking.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And to receive this, we have Adrian Byrne from our Health Department. Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners and Board of Health. Adrian Byrne, Health Director. Thank you for accepting this proclamation. So, Walktober, Walk to Wellness, is a free, community-wide, physical activity initiative, encouraging all of us to engage in the recommended 30 minutes of physical activity a day, at least five days a week. Walking really is the easiest way to meet this goal. And October is the perfect time for walking, because the leaves will eventually start turning, and it's supposed to start getting cooler tomorrow. So, it's a great time to either continue walking or to start a walking program. or to start a walking program. On average, many of us take a fraction of the recommended 10,000 steps that we need a day to be healthy. Walking is an easy exercise to do. We can do it at our own pace, fast or slow, and it helps with weight management, blood pressure control, can help reduce chances of stroke and heart attack, and can even help minimize the chance of hip fractures. So how do I participate in Walktober? Go to the Health and Wellness website and click on the Walktober link. There's a calendar to fill out for minutes, or steps, or miles. And for anyone that logs all of that and reports their activities at the end of the month, they will be registered to be entered to win health-related incentives. I would like to acknowledge that Chairman Dennis and I are on the Board of the Health and Wellness Board, and that Chair Member Tuttle is our President on that Board. So thank you for supporting Health and Wellness.
Thank you, Adrian. I appreciate that. As you said, I do serve on the Board. Becky Tuttle is a great leader for that Board, and I appreciate what she does to promote health and wellness throughout our community. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Isn't there like an app that we can track our steps? I think there's like an app that you can...
There's also an app.
Yeah.
And can you download that app from the Health and Wellness website?
I think so. There's information on the website.
Okay.
Okay.
I did go to the website this morning, and it says Walktober. You click on there, and it will take you through your options.
So we could compete with each other?
You absolutely can.
For that challenge?
It's a competition.
I don't see them very enthused.
Do we get a handicap based on age?
You can walk at a slower pace.
Commissioner Meitzner and I are looking for a handicap.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Next item, please.
Appointments. Item F, resolution appointing Rita Severt to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities.
Mr. Papoon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. This is a resolution... You have a resolution for you today, appointing Rita Severt to the Sedgwick County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. This is the Chairman's appointment. Each one of you have three appointments to this Board. Ms. Severt is re... Filling the unexpired term of Joe Brown, who resigned on September 4th of this year. So resolution's in proper form, and ask that you approve the resolution.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, I'd like to move that we appoint Rita Severt as my appointee to the Aging and Physical Disabilities Council. She is here in the audience today. I sincerely appreciate her volunteering to take this position. Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, and Kelly Arnold is here. If you'd go up, and he'll sit where you're in.
Good morning, Commissioners. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Kansas, and faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Cedric County Advisory Council on Aging and Physical Disabilities. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Hopefully, I can do a good job for you.
Well, thank you very much. It's a very important commission that we've got, and I appreciate you taking time to serve on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
New business. Item G, public hearing for the adoption of a new Sedgwick County Fire Code, 2019 edition, to replace the existing fire code of Sedgwick County Fire District Number One.
Morning, Chief.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Wagner, Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. What we're here for this morning is to open up the public hearings for the adoption of the 2018 Fire Code and the amendments. Before we get started, I would like to thank those people that helped us put this together. This was a group effort from various organizations. Keith Price from the City of Bel Air helped with this. Chief Bevis and Chief Frome from Wichita Fire Department, Chief Peter from Derby Fire, members of MABCD, and of course, our Sedgwick County Fire staff. A lot of work and effort went into putting this together, so hopefully, everything will go well. In the amendment package is what we're doing is, since 2003, we had an amendment package that was adopted, and these amendments mostly, for us, are administrative in nature. They allow us to do appeals, set fees, permits, and those type of things. But there are certain codes in there that directly influence operations within Sedgwick County and how we do business. One of the major ones that we did take on this year was the mobile food preparation vehicles. These are growing use in Sedgwick County within the cities, and we've taken on the permitting of those within Sedgwick County, so it's going to be a one-shot stop so they don't have to get permits and inspected by every community within Sedgwick County. So we'll have a standardized inspection process for mobile food trucks and the vendors. The other big one was the A2 occupancies. These are the establishments, public assemblies, that serve alcohol. Within Sedgwick County, we have a water issue. We're not... We don't have hydrants everywhere. So we're trying to look at ways where we can allow these establishments to have an occupancy of up to 300 people or 299 and be able to serve alcohol. The code requires that anything over 5,000 square feet and an occupancy of more than 100 require sprinkler systems. We took the amendment from the Wichita Fire Department and applied it to our code, which means that they can have an occupancy of 299 provided that they add additional egress and detection to the system. So those are kind of the big highlights of those. As I said, the rest of it was administrative. So at this point, I'd like to recommend that we open up the public hearings and then move forward with the adoption, if everything works well.
Thank you very much. I don't see any questions. I know that you've been around and briefed each and every one of the Commissioners, so we're very familiar with this issue. Well, at this time, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, at this time, I'd like to close public comment and move that we adopt the new Sedgwick County Fire Code, 2019 edition. Second. We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you for all the hard work you did on this new fire code. We appreciate it very much.
Oh, thank you very much. And I will throw in, next week is Fire Prevention Week. October 8th is our annual Fifth Grade Adventure, which invites all the fifth graders from local schools and schools outside the county. Reno County and Sumner County will be there. So if you had an opportunity to stop by the zoo on Tuesday, we'd be glad to see you there.
I actually will be there. I volunteered with my daughter's school, so I'm excited that she will... Hopefully, you're going to put her through the wringer like I was with that fire Safety 101.
We'll try.
So?
We'll try.
Okay, all right.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item H, amendment to the contractual agreement between USD 259 and Comcare.
Morning, Joan.
Good morning, Commissioners. If you could indulge me just a moment. You just accepted... Our Link Corps just accepted the proclamation for Mental Health Week, and I just want to make the public and the county and the Commissioner aware that in honor of this month, Sedgwick County or Comcare is bringing in Zach McDermott. He is the author of the book, The Grill and the Bird. He has lived with bipolar disorder for many, many years, and his mom Cindy has been his primary support network. And they're both coming and going to do a lively presentation at the Boathouse on October 17th from 5:45 to 7:45. It is a fundraising event because we want to make sure that we have the ability to scholarship people to go to mental health first aid and assist trainings in our community at no cost. So information's available on the Sedgwick County website as well as Comcare Community Partners, but it is an awesome opportunity. He is a national speaker. He is producing his story, or HBO is producing his story as a series, and he just won an Imagine Award. So pretty exciting opportunity for us. But my agenda item, I'm here because Comcare has an amendment... amended contract with USD 259 for our mental health innovation program. Earlier this year, you guys approved an agreement that was... The funding was aligned with the 2018-2019 school year. And then in September of 2019, the Kansas State School Board approved expansion of that program via an application project. USD 259 applied for an expansion and was granted that for us to add services in two additional schools. So that brings our funding up an additional $20,031. So my request is that you approve the amendment, establish budget authority, and then approve the Chairman to sign that. I do want to take a moment to remind you that we had incredible success last year. We served over 700 students, and the outcomes for academic performance, school attendance, and behavior in the classroom were all greater than 50%, and sometimes as high as 67%. So we're excited for this expansion. And as requested, they'll approve the contract, authorize the additional budget authority, and approve the Chairman to sign. I'd appreciate it.
Very good. Well, Joan, thank you for bringing us up to speed on what's going on there. We all recognize that that is a critical partnership that we've got between us and USD 259. We really and truly want to make sure that that ends up in the budget permanently, so that... I feel confident that we'll probably ask the state legislature to continue this program because it has proven to have great results. So thank you very much for bringing that. Move to approve... Whoops, I'm sorry. Commissioner O'Donnell.
You can finish. I'll second you.
Very good. Move to approve the contract agreement between USD 259 and Comcare.
Thank you. I do second that. So last night, I went... The Arts Council had a mayoral and Wichita City Council and Wichita School Board forum that I was able to go to, and this program was brought up by both Cheryl Logan and Joseph Shepherd, that are both running for that at-large position and talking about how this is a model and how great it was. Comcare also got mentioned because a lot of people were asking about mental health at the end when they opened it up. And so ICT One and some other issues were mentioned. But this program in particular was mentioned about how great it was and how Ms. Logan was talking about how much she believes that it's making a positive difference in our schools here. So that was firsthand, so it was very topical last night. So the fact that we're doing it today, I just thought I should let you know that, Joan, that good news travels fast.
I will be sure to share that with the team. And you know, what I'm most excited about is maybe we can change the conversation with youth, and there won't be as much stigma about people getting help for mental health going forward.
That's the goal.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. We have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item I, report of the Board of Bids and Contracts regular meeting on September 26, 2019.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of September 26. We have six items that came out of that meeting. Our first item is bridge improvements, and this is the bridge on 95th Street South between Broadway and Hydraulic. And the recommendation is to accept the low bid from Don Linger and Sons Construction Company Incorporated, and that's in the amount of $1,588,112.25. Item number two is a road improvement project for Public Works, and this road is the Rock Road sidewalk from McConnel Air Force Base to Oak Knoll Street. This recommendation is to accept the low responsive bid from Preto Construction LLC in the amount of $82,275. Item number three are pharmaceuticals, medical supplies, and other non-pharmacy products for various departments. This recommendation is to establish a contract with McKesson Medical Surgical Incorporated, and it's based on the State of Minnesota Multi-State Contracting Alliance for Pharmacy. And this contract is good through March 1st, 2020, and then it has options to renew for three additional one-year periods. Item number four is Stryker Life Pack and Lucas Service Plan for Emergency Medical Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Stryker Sales Corporation, and that's for the contract rates listed. Item number five, the on-call concrete and paving for various departments. The recommendation for this item is to accept the bids from both Conspec Incorporated, which is doing business as Kansas Paving, and PPJ Construction Incorporated, and establish the contract rates for three years with two one-year options to renew. And our final item, item number six, which is Kronos Telestaff Maintenance and Support for Emergency Medical Services and the Division of Information and Technology, is to recommend the quote from Kronos Incorporated in the amount of $74,552.83. And this will be effective from January 1st, 2020 through December 31st of the same year. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these items.
Thank you, Joe. I don't see any questions at all. All the Commissioners have reviewed the minutes of the Board of Bids and Contracts. Move to approve. Second. Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner. Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Stills with County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items J through R on today's agenda.
Thank you. Move to approve Juliet through Romeo.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papoon?
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman. The only legislative issues we're looking at right now is that it appears the Kansas Association of Counties has drafted a preliminary platform for 2020, of Counties has drafted a preliminary platform for 2020 and I'm currently reviewing that document and just wanna remind the Commissioners that the final document will be approved at the Annual Conference, which will be at the Hyatt this year on November 12th through the 14th. And Commissioner Cruz is our voting member at that, at that conference, so that's all I have at this point.
Very good. Any Commissioners have anything for legislative issues today? Commissioner Cruz?
When do we start talking about our legislative platform?
Anytime.
When is that discussion?
We'll start that discussion at, probably at the end of this month and craft it for November.
And so, how is that discussion, how does, is, how is that designed? I mean, is that an open forum? Is that a walk the halls? Is that, what is that?
We'll do it in a workshop setting on a Tuesday and be open forum.
Okay. And so...
And so, what we've instructed staff is they're compiling lists. We'll bring some staff requests. You all are welcome to bring requests forward and we hash it out in public.
Okay, so will our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, be there?
Yes.
And so, will he have an update of kind of what's going on?
If you want him to report out, we will arrange that.
I think that's probably appropriate to see what kind of is happening. I mean, I would like to know anyway.
Very good. And then Commissioner, the final adoption will be in the Board of County Commission meeting where you'll also have input and be able to deal, be able to vote for the platform.
And when will that vote be?
I think we typically do it late November, early December, obviously enough time for Tony and his staff to put together some nice document for the legislators and prior to their South Central Kansas meeting at WSU, which usually occurs early in January.
Okay.
And here. Anything else on legislative issues? Seeing nothing, Madam Clerk, next item.
Other?
Other. Do any Commissioners have anything? We have several. Commissioner Howell?
I just wanted to remind the public that tomorrow evening at the old Southeast High School, which is the 259, USD 259 Administration Building now, at the corner of Lincoln and Edgemore, technically the address is 903 South Edgemore, we have a Riverfront, Riverfront Legacy Master Plan Community Engagement Meeting tomorrow at 6:00 PM till 7:15. I would love to see people come out and talk with me and others. We have plenty of staff will be there as well. It'll be a presentation and an opportunity, opportunity for the public to weigh in and provide their opinions on, on that plan. So, I wanna just make sure people are aware of that opportunity. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I just want to make everyone aware that we have a couple of songstress in our community who have been making waves lately. I don't know if you guys were watching The Voice last night, but a friend of mine in Joy Fountain made it through to the next round. She was selected by Kelly Clarkson, so that's really kinda cool to hear Wichita, Kansas on a national level. The other thing is, is this week, the Jenny Wood documentary was debuted. Travis Heng of the Wichita Eagle put together this incredible documentary and I was just so honored to be a part of it. I was really, I'm excited to see Jenny get up and sing again after all that she's been through, so I'm just, I'm very excited. If you haven't had a chance to check it out, I would do so. And that's all I have. Thank you. Oh, also, sorry, the, I just wanna remind people of the event this weekend in Park City. You can take your bulky waste stuff up there to dispose and clean out your, do some fall cleaning.